We are on. Okay, welcome to the City of Treasure Island Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for October 23rd, 2025. If you wish to speak on a topic which is on today's agenda, a speaker's card is available on that table over to my left, near the entrance, and must be completed and given to the chairperson. Please do not address the board from your seat, but rather from the podium where your comments can be heard by all and recorded as required by Florida statute. Unscheduled topics may be presented under the public comments of the section of the agenda. Okay. If we could all silence our cellphones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, Gary, Ross isn't gonna make it. But anyway, okay, could we have the roll call to you?
Valeria Crey.
Here.
Gary Patenziano.
Here.
Mark Zojewski.
Here.
Christopher Donning.
Here.
Daniel Billingsley.
Billingsley, here.
Grant Smith.
Here.
Richard Harris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we had some, do we need to swear Daniel Billingsley in first? He has arrived.
You're gonna go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel Billingsley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties on the Planning and Zoning Board.
The duties of the Planning and Zoning Board.
And local planning agency.
And local planning agency.
Of the City of Treasure Island, Florida.
Of the City of Treasure Island, Florida.
On which I'm about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we did have some minutes of the meetings from September 18th. Have everybody took a look at those? Any problems or could we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes of September 18th, 2025.
A second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those are approved. Status update on prior planning and zoning cases. Jesse, the main ones we always want to know about is the first section. Just doesn't sound like much is happening with our favorite gas station in town.
Not really. They're still debating back and forth with FDOT right now, possibly because of like a median thing just for traffic, basically for delivering fuel. And the turning radius is the issue right now that they're working through.
But they are still in contact, it sounds like.
Yep. I believe it was maybe three weeks ago, we sat down with a meeting with them and FDOT to try to them resolve the issues.
The, any other changes on the other ones here?
No, pretty much just for some of the new board members, everything that's highlighted is pretty much the only thing that's changed. So if you have any questions or comments, concerns about any of these, hopefully I will do my best to answer them.
Any questions for Jesse on those? Seeing none, we'll keep on moving. Hearing procedures, go for it, Gavin.
So I think most of you are familiar with this, but I'll just do a quick overview. You guys are under the Sunshine Law, meaning you can't talk to each other outside of advertised meetings on anything that is before or conceivably could be before your board. So you can ask how family is, that type of thing, but just can't talk about items of business outside of these publicly advertised meetings. These meetings are what's called quasi judicial, and that just simply means it's not completely like a court hearing, but it has similarities in the sense of due process and hearing both sides of an issue before making a decision. And one of the things that, aspects of these hearings is that you want to disclose if there has been any kind of what's called ex parte communication for the non Latin speakers in the room, myself included. Just means outside of this hearing communication. So if someone came up to you and said, hey, I really want you to vote for this, you just have to disclose that on the record. And the reason for that is simply that everything needs to be in the sunshine and be very clear so that the record is clear what you guys used in your determination on voting. It's not exactly like a hearing in a courtroom in the sense of the rules of evidence, that type of thing, but both sides will have an opportunity to present, you guys will have an opportunity to ask questions, that type of thing. And so that's the general overview. And I think, just if anyone has any questions, open it up for that.
All righty. If anybody is going to speak today, please be sworn in.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony and evidence you're about to give before the Planning and Zoning Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, anybody got any ex parte communication they need to talk about on any of these four cases today? If not, we'll get into our first case. The Norvend Building, way at the north end, case number A dot A S P E C dash zero 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 five oh seven dash two oh two five dash twelve hundred seven, twelve thousand seven hundred Gulf Boulevard Special Exception Used to Request to Allow Food Service and Alcoholic Beverage Establishment as an accessory use within an existing 21-unit hotel. The applicant is here, please approach the podium and state what you want to do.
All righty. Thank you all for hearing us today. So we.
Can you give your, name and address?
Name and address, all right. Phil Rooney, 2211 Greenway South, St. Pete, Florida. Anything else?
No, you're good.
All righty. Go for it. So we had purchased this hotel to renovate it, it had been an old timeshare. After the hurricane, we dug into the building and found that the pipes were bad, the electric was bad, the HVAC was bad. The only thing that was good was the concrete. So it's been an odyssey to get to the point where we can, you know, safely say we've got the funds raised, everything's happening to finish the building, and it'll be a very nice new building. The challenge is that the financials of a 21-unit hotel, when you're talking about the value of an acre of beachfront land in Treasure Island, they don't work out. I mean, we're looking at rooms are about 450 square feet, it's almost $400 a foot of dirt per room. I don't know how much you know about the economics of hotels, but that doesn't work. So getting the lenders, getting the investors comfortable, fundamentally was a challenge. And when the city changed the code to allow special exception use of food and beverage, that was essentially our saving grace in this project. And so what we're trying to do, that supplements really the project financially and makes it viable. So what we're trying to do is have a small kitchen that is mainly going to be, you know, bar service. This is designed to be a very low-key operation, but enough to sustain. So we have a small bar, you can order at the bar, kitchen will produce food, and then people can go up and pick up food at the window. You know, the idea is that you can sit around the pool, sit by the bar, but there's really not going to be any service aside from just the underground, or not underground, just the undercover area you show as it's denoted right there. But that's what we're trying to do. We're aware, we're working with structural and our contractors on how we do this because this isn't a VE zone, so making sure that everything is built breakaway, dry floodproofed, location of utilities, and really just trying to clean up the area. It's a beautiful property, an amazing piece of land, and we really want to see this get done, and this is a critical step for us to make it work, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So the intent will be that it's open to the public?
Yes, sir.
And in terms of folks coming from, not from the beach side, but from the street side, will there be any allocation for parking or allowance for parking?
On the plans, the parking amount that we have, the total spaces, I can't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, but we do meet the parking requirements for the service area. So we've denoted this 660-foot service area for which we have to provide an additional seven spaces.
Okay.
And so, yeah, those parking spaces are included and accounted for in our parking.
That's great. That'd be a great addition to the beach.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you would please have a seat, and we'll let the city staff give their presentation. Go for it, Jesse.
All right, as previously discussed with the chair, I'm going to try to run this together also with the next agenda item, which is 10B, which is the site plan approval for this special exception. So I'm going to be jumping around between some of these slides. So this is agenda item 10A, case number S P E C dash zero 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 five zero seven dash two zero two five. And as previously mentioned, this is a request to allow a food service and alcoholic beverage establishment as an accessory use within an existing 21-unit hotel. As required by code, the special exception use application is accompanied by a site plan application S I T E dash zero 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 five zero zero dash two zero two five. This is located at 12700 Gulf Boulevard, has land use of resort facilities high, and is zone resort facilities medium 50. And we previously saw this site plan. So just bear with me, there's a lot more in this criteria for special exceptions as compared to site plans. So criteria one, a hotel motel is a permitted use within the RFH 50 zoning district pursuant to Section 68 dash 484 of the Land Development Regulations accessory uses, which include restaurants, alcoholic beverage establishments, personal service stores, and similar uses may be permitted as allowed in the zoning district by special exception of the Planning and Zoning Board. They have to fulfill these following conditions. One, alcoholic beverage establishments shall not exceed 10% of the total floor area of the principal building. Condition two, all such accessory uses shall be situated within the principal building. Criteria two, the proposed special exception use is consistent with the objectives within the comprehensive plan to ensure that redevelopment and new development occur in planned areas at the appropriate densities and intensities as indicated on and consistent with the City of Treasure Island future land use map. Criteria three, the food service and alcoholic beverage establishment will be located within the principal use. This establishment must be operated in accordance with the regulations set forth by the Florida Division of Alcoholic Beverages and Tobacco, Pinellas County Health Department, and all City of Treasure Island's Code of Ordinances. The establishment must meet all applicable regulations of the Florida Building Code and Florida Fire Prevention Code, which will be reviewed during the permit building process. Criteria four, the accessory use is similar to existing food and alcoholic beverage establishments, typically within RFH 50 zoning district. Criteria five, the proposed accessory use is compatible with development in the vicinity of the property under consideration which are primary tourist-related uses. The use is proposed for location completely within the existing hotel, resulting in minimal impacts to surrounding properties. Criteria six, the accessory use will be consistent with the purpose of the RFH 50 zoning district to delineate those areas as defined within the city's comprehensive plan, resort facilities high, suitable for limited residential as well as resort facility development of a high-density character, together with associated special exceptions and accessory uses. Criteria seven, the accessory use is being proposed within the principal structure of a developed site, and the landscaping areas should not be affected by this use. However, a landscape plan has been submitted that demonstrates an improvement of the environment will be accomplished over the existing site conditions. Criteria eight, accessory uses to hotel motel services require additional off-street parking of one space per five occupants, calculated at 20 square feet of net usable area per occupant. The site plan for this development addresses the required number of off-street spaces and are reviewed under case number S I T E dash zero 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 five zero zero dash two zero two five. Criteria nine, as previously mentioned, the accessory use is located entirely within the principal structure, and the only entrance and exit to the accessory use within the lobby is orientated toward the interior of the site and not directed toward the street or an adjacent property. Criteria 10, as already mentioned, located within the principal structure. Criteria 11, this is where it is, the main lobby on the ground floor with 660 square feet dedicated to use. There is to be no sales or service of food and/or alcoholic beverages outside of this designated area, as it would require calculations of the net usable area for additional off-street parking spaces, any modification to the proposed site plan. As accessory use is located entirely within the principal structure, it should not create any adverse effects of noise, lights, dust, fumes, or other nuisances generated in excess of the typical hotel use. Criteria 12, no additional land is required. Criteria 13, the adoptive level of service for each aspect of the city's infrastructure is not anticipated to be negatively impacted by the proposed accessory use. Staff will determine whether a concurrence review is required, and if so, it will be completed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Then staff's recommendation is, my apologies, I did not change that, but staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Condition one, the following site plan must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. Condition two, the sales and service of alcoholic beverages is limited to 660 square feet of the area specifically identified and located on the ground floor within the lobby of the principal use. There shall be no sales or service of food and slash or alcoholic beverages outside of the principal use or anywhere else on a subject property. Criteria three, the proposed 660 square feet of food and alcoholic beverage service shall be clearly identified on the site and floor plan for this special exception use. Criteria four, the alcoholic beverage establishment must be operated in accordance with all regulations and licensing requirements of the Florida Division of Alcoholic Beverages and Tobacco, Pinellas County Health Department, and the City of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances. And criteria five, the area for the food service and alcoholic beverage establishment must be constructed in accordance with the Florida Building Code and Florida Fire Prevention Code. And I guess you can make a motion on this, and I'll bleed into the next one then. I'll just go straight to the conditions and staff's recommendation for the site.
We do have one card, so we have a card from, anyway, before I get into the card, any questions of the city staff by the board?
I just had one question, I'm sorry. This is probably naive, Jesse, so forgive me, but the 660 square feet, that's just limiting the service area. I mean, if people walk up from the beach, is there an ordinance that would prevent them from taking food or beverages beyond that?
It's actually in our code for accessory uses, it has to be located within the entire building, so that ground floor is, is 660 square feet correct? Yeah, so that's why it's limited to the 660 square feet.
They're not going to be responsible for enforcing if somebody comes in and gets a beverage or food and takes it out of that 660.
That, we, code-wise, we focus on you can only serve us there. If they walk outside of that, that would, I believe that would fall upon the property owners if they regulate where they take those beverages then.
Okay, thanks.
It's mostly to make sure you don't end up with a serving area out on the beach or something like that.
But there is, yeah, open container on the beach for Treasure Island anyways.
So they could take it out.
Any other questions?
It's just, yeah, you can't serve them, you can't be like, the person's in the water and here's the waitstaff with a beverage kind of. But if they grab it and it's a plastic and it's not owned by them, and they wander into the water or something like that, then it's not like we're going to shut them down as a result of that.
Right.
All righty, we have Sharon McLendon.
Hi, my name is Sharon McLendon, I have property at 12615 Sunshine Lane and 12621 Sunshine Lane. And I just have a question about clarifying, there are certain places that you go to and they say no alcoholic beverages beyond this point. Is that going to be, and what is, is anybody liable if they do go past that? That's one.
So a lot, it is kind of confusing because like on Sunset Beach, we have some of that too. What it is, is that there's no alcoholic beverages related to that establishment beyond this point. But in theory, if somebody had a to-go cup, right, and they took that to-go cup and then walked along the beach, then the police is not going to, most likely issue, based on the open container rules of the city, is not going to issue a citation, but there's not, glass is not allowed.
Okay.
And so what you could have is, so for instance, if I get a glass of wine or a beer or something and it's in a glass container, then you certainly would not be able to go outside of that. You'd have to maintain everything related to that business. But if they're like, here's a to-go cup, and then they're wanting to take that to-go cup and it's plastic and it's not going to be returned to the, and someone walks along the beach, then that, that would be allowed, if that makes sense.
So this establishment can be a walk up from the beach, get a cocktail if they serve it in a plastic glass, or if I put it in a plastic glass and go back to the beach?
Sort of, yeah, but it's ultimately what that person, the individual does, it's not, the business is not policing or determining that. So then it would then invoke a separate part of the code, which is, the City of Treasure Island has allowed for open container. And so anyone can, if I go to Publix, right, and I grab, I get a beer and I open it and pour it in a container and I drink it, that's allowed anywhere, right, within certain, generally anywhere, not everywhere, but there's wide latitude where that can be consumed. And so, but they, the particular business, for instance, probably doesn't allow outside alcohol, so I couldn't go to Publix, get that, and then go to their establishment. So it, yeah, I think generally it wouldn't be a good idea for them to, you know, have that as their main focus of providing that, but if somebody got an alcoholic beverage and chose to put it in a container that was allowed and then left, then, you know, that would probably not be something that the police would ticket them for, so.
Okay. What you all gonna do? Okay. And then the other thing, just because we live so close, we live three, well, two spaces away, and they're small lots, is traffic. It's just, just, you know, it's a small little area. I know that you're not going to be able to change anything or do anything, just to say that. And other than that, good, thank you.
It is a 21-room hotel, they are required to have 22 parking spaces, so they will have sufficient parking, so that's all they can do. And with that, we're going to move right into the next case because it's just a change, and then we'll vote after this presentation on both, we'll have a motion for each case. But does the applicant have any, does the applicant have anything more he would want to say in regard to the second case? Okay, just for the record's sake, this is going to be case number site 000500 dash 2025, and, oh, where'd my agenda go? Site plan approval request for a food service and alcoholic beverage establishment within an existing 21-unit hotel. With that, go ahead, Jesse.
All right. So I'm just going to hit on basically the criteria that has to be pretty much all of our LDRs. So they have met everything, lot width, depth, area, density, lot coverage, ISR, FAR, and then also their parking calculations as well. That's pretty much the whole point of the site plan review, to make sure that everything that they still meet that criteria. And then we will jump down to the staff recommendation. And the staff has reviewed the proposed site plan and determined that it satisfies the applicable criteria set forth in Section 70 dash 92 of the Land Development Code. Staff recommends the proposed site plan be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, a special exception, case number S P E C dash zero 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 five zero seven dash two zero two five, a use for a food service and alcoholic beverage establishment must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. Condition two, all building permits and construction associated with this development proposal shall be subject to all current regulations within the Florida Building Code, Flood-Plane Management Regulations, Land Development Regulations, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code in effect at the time of the building permit application process. Criteria three, all applicable state and federal permits and slash or exemptions shall be submitted to the city prior to the first inspection. And of course, if you have any questions about the site plan.
Any questions for Jesse? Okay, based on that, we've heard both cases. Can we get a motion on the first case, which is?
I got it, Richard. I'll take it.
You're gonna run with it?
Yeah, I'll run with it, okay. Regarding case number S P E C zero 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 five zero seven. Regarding case number SPEC-000507-2025, Thursday, October 23rd, 2:00 p.m., special exception use to allow food service and alcoholic beverage establishment as a necessary use within an existing 12-unit hotel at 12700 Gulf Boulevard. I make a motion to approve it. There's special request, but to include the five exceptions with that approval as well.
Thank you, could I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Gary Potenciano, second by Chris Downing, could we have a roll call vote?
Valia Cre?
Yes.
Gary Potenciano?
Yes.
Mark Zodeski?
Aye.
Chris Downing?
Yes.
Daniel Billingsley?
Yes.
Grant Smith?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking this one on, we'll now go into the second ordinance. Gary, you want to make the same motion, pretty much?
Sure, sure, I make a motion with case number site 000513-2025, Thursday, October 23rd, 2:00 p.m. Description, site plan approval request for two separate buildings consisting of a total of five residential dwellings. Site location 11295 Gulf Boulevard, Treasure Island, Florida. I make a motion that we approve, but also to include the three conditions provided in the staff report.
Thank you, Gary, could I have a second?
I'll second again.
Okay, motion.
Wait, wait, it's the wrong, it's the wrong motion, it's the wrong ordinance, sir.
Which one did you read, Gary? There's only three conditions, did you say five?
I said, I said three.
Three conditions.
21-unit hotel.
21-unit hotel.
It's 21-unit hotel.
Right.
All right, start over.
Make sure it's the SITE-000500-2025 should be the one that you were on now.
Which one did you read, Gary?
I read the next one, the next case that's coming.
Oh, 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 I wasn't, did not hear that.
Yeah, with the three exceptions right there.
Yeah, it should be 500, right? Okay, I only got one.
I don't have that one.
Here, just, here you go.
All right, here we go.
All right, yeah, just do it over, just to make sure we got it covered.
Which one is he talking about here, again? There's, I got it, here we go. Case number 000500-2025, 12700 Gulf Boulevard. A site planned to approve food service and alcoholic beverage establishment within an existing 21-unit hotel. I make a motion and we approve it to include the three conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gary Potenciano, second by Chris Downing, we got the right one, could we have a roll call vote?
Valia Cre?
Thanks, guys.
Yes.
Gary Potenciano?
Aye.
Mark Zodeski?
Aye.
Chris Downing?
Aye.
Daniel Billingsley?
Aye.
Grant Smith?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking on this 21-unit hotel, it has been sitting destitute for a bit.
What are you going to call it?
Good luck.
Hotel Delphina?
What's the estimated timeline on completion?
We are targeting February.
All right. Congratulations, good.
That's great, all right.
Well, all come and, all right. We'll all come and visit the new restaurant.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the next one. This is number 10C, site-000513-2025-11295 Gulf Boulevard. Site plan approval request for two separate buildings consisting of a total of five residential dwelling units. If the applicant is here, please approach the podium and tell us what you want to do. Oh, I didn't know it was you, Jack.
Pardon? You didn't know it was you?
This is the old.
I haven't seen me in a while, I mean, it's, it used to be here every other month, I think some of you know, and.
This is the old Casino Hotel.
Pardon me?
It used to be the Casino Hotel, I think was the name of it.
Oh, yeah, it used to be the Casino, yep. Yeah, the Casino, this thing had been through a couple owners since it was the Casino, the Casino Hotel owner passed away. We had had a plan in that was approved at that time, then we had another group come in that, that had the 11-unit condo hotel approved, and fortunately, he went into bad health and it wound up going to auction. The gentleman that own it now are solid and have bought the purchase of property. We have the plans, we're prepared to move ahead, and so I just am here to answer any questions you may have. Actually, Jesse will do his presentation. Well, I've had, you know, I, it's basically pretty simple, it's zoned for 11 units, actually what would hold, previously was approved for 11 condo hotel units. And as you know, the two uses are allowable, are residential and resort facility, intermix and intermatching as far as rental goes. The property is approximately 4.43 acres. I mean, you know, Jesse's report is pretty thorough, and I really was just here to answer any questions that may come up, or if you had any questions about it. I won't bore you with a long presentation, let Jesse make his case, and I'm here if you have any questions. All right.
I do have one quick one, and it's more just a clarification for the audience and for my benefit. As far as a hotel, your main restriction on this piece of property is its size. I mean, it's less than a half an acre. There's not, I mean, you used to be approved for 11 units, that's not, I mean, that's less than what we just heard, and he told us how he was struggling.
What they wanted to do was put basically similar units, but bigger, townhouse-type variety units, not they, that, if you recall, the old building, it was a little bit intrusive, it was a seven-story, I think, and it was 11 smaller units, and they wanted to come back in with bigger units and do, it's a lot clearer, they actually could have put a few more units on, but they chose to.
And you are going to sell off the townhomes individually?
We're going to sell, they went the right to sell, of course, they'll be sold off individually, they fall under either zoning, so, you know, the temporary use or the, it's one of the unusual zonings in the code, as you know, and, but yes, they are going to sell the units off individually.
Thank you, Jack, anybody else got any questions for Mr. Boziak? Did I pronounce your name right?
He'll be back again after a while.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Jesse.
All right, so just a reminder, this is case number SITE-000513-2025. The applicant is currently seeking a site plan approval for two separate buildings consisting of a total of five residential dwelling units. And this is located 11295 Gulf Boulevard. The land use is a resort facilities medium, it has a zoning district of RFM 30. And here's a quick overview of the site plan, landscape plan, some east and west elevations, north and south elevations. Now, just kind of like a little background, you guys kind of already discussed this. From what I reviewed, so in 2019, the PNZ approved a 12-unit tourist resort, and then in 2022, they also approved a 12-unit condo hotel. The lot is currently vacant. And moving on to site plan review criteria, section 70-92. Criteria one, the subject property has a future land use designation of resort facilities medium and is located within a resort facilities medium zoning district. The proposed use and density is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Criteria two, the proposed site plan is in conformance with all applicable regulations of the RFM 30 zoning district. And this kind of gives you a little breakdown of all the criteria that they have met. Criteria three is not applicable. Criteria four A, the proposed site plan meets the purpose and intent of the RFM 30 zoning district and will not impact compatibility with the planning character of the RFM 30 zoning district. Criteria four B, the proposed site plan meets drive aisle width, parking space width and length, driveway and sidewalk connections within the right-of-way appear to adhere to all applicable FDOT standards. Criteria four C, the proposed site plan is in conformance with the landscaping requirements set forth in chapter 72. Criteria four D, the development consists of two structures that meet all setback requirements. Four E, it's not applicable. Four F is not applicable. Four G is not applicable. And criteria five, it's not applicable. Criteria six, the proposed site plan will require permits or exemptions from the Southwest Florida Water Management District and the Florida Department of Transportation. Criteria seven is not applicable as well. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Condition one, all building permits and construction associated with this development proposal shall be subject to all current regulations within the Florida Building Code, Flood-Plane Management Regulations, Land Development Regulations, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code in effect at the time of the building permit application process. Criteria two, where necessary to accommodate the proposed development, the property owners shall be responsible for the removal, relocation of any and all public utilities located on a subject site. Criteria three, all applicable state and federal permits and/or exemptions shall be submitted to the city prior to the first inspection. And of course, any questions?
I just have one quick question, Jesse, and it really doesn't have to do with this case, but I just was having to notice it about swimming pools. As you well know, we're going to come up with changes to the LDR, and this is for my future education. Right now, we're eliminating the top of the swimming pool 12 inches above existing grade. What is the rationale for that? I mean, with Helene, we found out that the elevation of the water actually got up to elevation 7.8 above sea level. In the future, when we change the LDRs, would it be okay to raise that up? If there's not a outline good reason why we're limiting it to 12 inches?
Yeah, I'll get with Bobby and Mary Ellen, and we can do some research, see what the reasoning was behind the 12 inches, because personally, I don't know myself.
Yeah, I mean, my next-door neighbor went through this, and I was just curious, because it came up as one of the conditions here.
I think it can be, it can be an issue if someone does something in the extreme. Obviously, 12 inches wouldn't do anything. Line of sight from neighbor, that's where it would get potentially an issue.
I know you don't want to have it 12 feet up in the air.
Well, there's, you know, like waterfalls and such, I think that's really where, that's the, that's the genesis of why that restriction of the 12 inches was put in.
And that's where we're going to, we're going to have a lot of fun with architectural review.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we've got Mark on site, who's a contractor, we've got Daniel, who's also a air conditioning contractor, so we can have a lot of fun in the future with that.
That's right.
Any other questions for Jesse?
Just one, Jesse, really probably not related to this directly, but since this went from, what, 11 units initially, now they're going for five, five units, there's no dock that's a part of this site plan, and that, the docks are handled completely separate, but does this in any way change what would be allowed to do in that area, dock-wise, or is it completely a separate issue?
Just, I don't want to give you definite answers right now, but my understanding is if these would be sold off separately, we would have to create probably like a condo association or homeowners association, and then we might possibly maybe have to plat it and make that common ground, and then you could have a commercial dock with each unit have its own designated boat slip then.
Right.
Just off the top of my head, I'm thinking that's how that might work.
All right, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, because I got no cards, really don't have any problem with this project either. Could we get a motion?
I'll take this one, I guess. All right, I'm sure I got the right one here. So, I would move that the Planning and Zoning Board approve the site plan as requested for the two separate buildings consisting a total of five dwelling units with the conditions that are on this document and as presented by the city.
Okay, motion by Chris Downing, second by Grant Smith, could we have a roll call?
Valia Cre?
Yes.
Gary Potenciano?
Yes.
Mark Zodeski?
Aye.
Chris Downing?
Yes.
Daniel Billingsley?
Aye.
Grant Smith?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Jack, you're approved, go build this one. We want to see some construction in Treasure Island.
Even if it's a sand castle.
There you go. All right, we'll move on to the next one.
We're going to get out of here.
10D, SMOD-000527-2025, at the address of 8801 West Gulf Boulevard, a site plan modification request to allow a proposed 297-square-foot tiki hut to be installed over an existing seating area for an existing alcoholic beverage establishment. I know the applicant is here, so please tell us what you want to do.
Jason Goldstein, on behalf of attorney and representative of the applicant, and I'm going to hand it over to Dennis Lang, the engineer, to explain what's going on.
Good afternoon, everybody, thank you very much. As noted, my name is Dennis Lang. My address for the record is 2034th Avenue North in St. Pete, represent for the owner here, our new cheeky hut structure that we're adding to the property here. As noted in the application, it's already an existing seating area on site, we're just adding a new structure so we can have some extra covered areas out there for when we have some rain and inclement weather, we have a lot of people that flock in off the beach, so this is in accordance of providing some additional shelter structure on site for areas that are already activated for use for our site plans. You know, one of the questions that came up is obviously the parking on site. On property, we have the necessary parking that's required by code for our use areas, and including of this area that's activated. We have a parking diagram that's pretty grandfathered in, it's from the early 90s. As anybody that's been out there knows, we have a lot of parking on site, it's accommodated in the form of a valet-assisted format, so that as patrons arrive on site, they're directed to the parking, because it's afforded in a tandem configuration, which isn't typically operated by just you showing up and figuring out who you park behind. So, we have 30 spaces that we operate on site currently, they're all shown on our site plan, but they are afforded to us in that tandem configuration that we do manage daily with an attendant. So, I think that's pretty much what we want to make sure is clear for everybody, but if there are any questions, we're more than happy to address them in a forthright and direct manner.
And this is going to be very similar to what's, I live right down the street, so it's going to be very similar to what currently exists over the main bar and.
Yes, sir, it's going to look consistent with the architectural style of the existing building.
And it's going to be built by the Seminole Indians, I assume.
That is correct, sir, it is a legal, cheeky structure.
No permits are required for that in regard of a building permit, but I thank you for coming in and doing a site plan, because there's a lot of misunderstanding on that, you do have to have site plan approval, so we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
The only request, and some, well, Grant's a Sunset Beach resident as well, the only comment I will make is the parking right in front of your, what is called the wood deck and tiki bar. People love to drive those big crew cab pickup trucks these days, and they got a huge trailer hitch on the back. You wouldn't believe the number of guys who pull in there and leave their trailer hitch hanging out in the through lane of West Gulf Boulevard.
Well, then, we'll make sure we make a note to our LA guys to get a better look on that one for us, so we don't have that existing problem for you guys out there.
Well, to show you how familiar I am with this, Kenny, your valet, happens to be a friend of mine, so if you would just tell him to be careful, because I swear, one of these days, I'm going to hit it myself, and I'm like, you know, I wish the driver, I know it's not your fault, it's the driver of the vehicle, but I wish the driver of those vehicles would just be reminded, hey, that's a little dangerous.
Yeah, we'll have to pull him a little bit closer if that's become an issue for you guys turning that corner out there.
Well, it just, it's just something I see on a regular basis, and I said, well, I'll bring it up, I don't, you know, it's, it's something that's hard to control, I know Paul's sitting in the back back there, and he knows what I'm talking about as well.
Yeah, we try and get them on there, we try and get as many as we can on site, so they're not sneaking off into the neighborhood.
It's just, you know, the parking is something that we just deal with, between, I mean, in its heyday, caddies and kateki, it would just be a little point of congestion, and that's just something you live with, because I want to see you guys continue to have the great success. I hope to see caddies back in business in their actual 1930s buildings someday in my lifetime, so we appreciate what you're doing. Any other questions from the applicant?
Would a no oversized vehicle sign in front of those spots?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, you know, I'm just saying, I'm just making a friendly request to take that into account, because it's not my problem if somebody hits it, I'm not going to hit one, I hope, but it could happen. But anyway, any other questions? If you would have a seat, Jesse, go for it.
All right, this is case number SITE-000527-2025, and this is a site plan modification to allow a.
This is a site plan modification to allow a proposed 297 square foot tiki hut to be installed over an existing seating area for an existing restaurant and alcoholic beverage establishment. This is located 8801 West Gulf Boulevard, the land use commercial general, and it is also zoned commercial general. We've already seen the site plan. Just going back to the permit question, they actually do have a permit, and right now, it's already been, it's already been reviewed and approved, it's just waiting the outcome of this meeting today. Some elevations. So, just a lot of history on this one. I don't know if you want me to go into this. It's up to the board on that one. Richard, would you like me to go over the background of this?
Not really. I mean, I'm sure probably every member of this board, if they haven't patronized the place, they've driven by it, so go ahead.
All right, so moving on to the, into the site plan review criteria, which is stated in section 70 dash 92. Criteria one, the subject property has a future land use designation of commercial general and is located within the commercial general zoning district. The existing use is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Criteria two, the existing site plan is not in conformance with all applicable regulations of the CG zoning district. So, this is kind of bleeding back into the parking discussion. During a visit out there, I was unable to identify any ADA handicap parking spaces, so that's, as of right now, I'm sure they have one. I wasn't able to identify one. Then, as we get into the conditions for this site plan, the applicant did mention that they already have a grandfathered parking plan, so we are recommending that they submit that parking plan to city staff, so we can review it, make sure that meets our parking code then as well, too. Then we can also have that on record officially after this. And another thing that is not by the applicant's fault, the lot area also is nonconforming to that zoning district. Criteria three, the proposed site plan modification does not include a subdivision of property. Criteria four, A, the proposed site plan modification meets the purpose and intent of the CG zoning district and will not impact compatibility with the planning character of the CG zoning district. For B, staff is recommending a condition that the property owner submit a parking plan to ensure the off-street parking area meets code. For A, it's not applicable. For D, the development consists of one structure, and the proposed 297 square foot tiki hut addition meets all required setbacks. For E, the proposed site plan modification will not impact the use of the existing public beach or access to the waterfront. The existing 10-foot public easement for beach access on the south side of the property will remain unaffected. For F, it's not applicable. For FG is not applicable. Criteria five, not applicable. Criteria six, the proposed site plan modification will require a permit or exemption from the Southwest Florida Water Management District. Criteria seven is also not applicable. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Condition one, all building permits and construction associated with this development proposal shall be subject to all current regulations within the Florida Building Code Flood-Plane Management Regulations, Land Development Regulations, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code in effect at the time of the building permit and application process. Criteria two, all applicable state and federal permits and/ or exemptions shall be submitted to the city prior to the first inspection. Criteria three, site plan amendment approval is limited to the proposed 297 square foot tiki hut. The depicted parking spaces landscaping and other site elements shown on the plan are not included in this approval. Criteria four, property owner will submit a parking plan to ensure the number and/ or arrangement of parking spaces meets section 68 dash 486 off-street parking. And staff is available for questions.
Okay, any questions for the city staff? Go ahead, Chris.
Jesse, I'm trying to understand one thing, because, Richard, you brought up about the Seminole Indians potentially building the tiki hut itself and whether or not permits are issued for that. Trying to make sure the whole board here, and me included, understand, I guess, how this works in a situation like this, where we're approving a site plan, and there's some indication that, and it says under the conditions that you're, we would probably approve this, that they meet all Florida Building Code regulations. How does that play into this whole issue of Seminole Indian-built structures?
Gotcha.
I'd like a quick education on it, if we have time.
There's actually one that should be removed from that, because we still need a zoning review permit and then also flood plane permit. Just because this is exempt from the Florida Building Code, there's still other requirements that we have. So, on your point, I would recommend removing the Florida Building Code out of that condition one, then. And then, now, the Seminole Indian construction would apply.
Well, so I guess, Richard, maybe you can enlighten us.
Bottom line is, they don't need a building permit, an actual building permit, but the other stuff on here, they do have to meet, like Flood-Plane Management Regulations, Land Development Regulations.
Setbacks.
They have a site plan.
Right.
You can't build a tiki hut in setbacks.
Right.
I mean, we...
So, all the other issues of being hurricane-proof, anything like that, that's all out the window if they're building this in that way.
I mean, Florida, fire prevention, it's on here, Florida Fire Prevention Code, and in fact, obviously, you look at all those palm fronds up there, and you go, yeah, we want to make sure that this thing doesn't catch on fire and burn up all the houses on either side, because there's some interesting new houses just to the south of this, but...
So, to that, I guess, to that point, so we're, we're going to take, potentially take out, you're recommending now that we take out the Florida Building Code requirement, because that's not going to be applicable.
Correct. That, this...
Florida Fire Code, Prevention Code would still be in, in effect, and would they actually put sprinklers on a structure like this? Or is, how do they handle it?
I can't speak for the fire department, but I do know Tom Brennan, Deputy Fire Chief, he did, he did review the plan.
And I think...
Not sure what they look at. Can't speak for fire.
Okay.
And, yeah, go ahead.
I think a little bit directly to your comments. The cheeky hut structure is constructed under a different provision of Florida statute. When it's constructed by the Seminole Indians, it does not need to comply with certain provisions of the Florida Building Code, because of the nature of its construction, being constructed under like traditional tribal means.
Right.
Okay, so like, you know, the palm fronds, we don't see houses being built with palm fronds. But we still comply with components of the Florida Building Code, like the Florida Fire Prevention Code. It is treated with an intumescent product, so it is non-combustible. So, like, you can walk up to it, hold a lighter to it, it's not going to catch on fire, you know? So, we still are doing certain components of the building code for the affordance of life safety and protection of patrons. We just don't have to comply with portions of it in the form of like the uplift and other elements of the code that would not be conducive to that structure. That's why it's constructed by the Seminole Indians, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you for getting us up this...
I do have a question.
Certainly.
Just a quick question from my own edification. The existing tiki hut that's out there, I mean, it did very well during Helene and Milton last year. I mean, it had some damage, but nothing of major consequence. But how often does it have to be retreated with a chemical substance to...
The intumescent paint product that we use is a permanent product. Like, once we use it, like, the product approvals for it is a 30-year product, you know? So, really, when that, that product is not going to degrade over time, it is imbued on all of these surfaces. So, anywhere you try to go and catch that structure on fire, you're going to come in contact with this product, and it's not going to allow for it. In restoring the structure after the storms, and we have to repair parts of the thatch, that product is reapplied, so we don't have to worry about, you know, lapses in that type of coverage. So, that's generally how those structures are maintained. As you noted, they do maintain themselves a little bit differently in winds, you know, in our storm conditions. They kind of have a miraculous ability to survive those events, so that's why they're still afforded that permission through the state.
And what's the name of the engineering firm on your shirt?
Oh, I'm an, I'm actually an architect. Mine, I'm Dennis Lang, this is Lang for Folia.
Okay, oh, okay, because we, we have crossed paths some, somewhere in the past.
I grew up here on Treasure Island, so...
I used to work for King Engineering.
I've been doing here for 15 years, and I worked with Jack before, you know, Jack when he was in here, so you probably see me behind him for a couple of years early on.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions for either the applicant or staff? Mark?
Yeah, hey, Jesse, so you said this didn't go through review, zoning review yet?
I believe it went through all review, it's just pending the outcome of this meeting.
Outcome of this? And then, so you have the condition on the number of parking spaces. Did they meet that condition, or you still need to verify that, that the parking situation is met?
We still need to verify the parking.
Okay, so that'll happen after the decision of this?
Yes, and actually, I'm glad you brought that condition up. This is one thing we did not think about. If you could, please, maybe consider putting like a time limit on this. I mean, it sounds like they already have a plan that's in place, so I don't know, maybe like 60, 90 days or something like that to get that submitted to the city.
Okay. And are they grandfathered in with the parking situation? Because I know it's very tight parking there, and it's hard to meet sometimes, you know, the parking standards that are going to be put forth here, so...
Yeah, so, once they submit us that plan, we're going to go review pretty much all the back history on that property and see what was grandfathered in, what they can do, what they can't do.
Yeah, because it looks like in the past, they had, you know, the P&amp;Z board approved the site plan, okay?
Well, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, but I mean, according to your chart, it required 17, provided 30.
That is correct. They do meet the number of parking, but the issue that could come up is, it appears like it's stacked parking. We need to see how that was approved.
And there is stacked parking there, and also, I think, just over the age and the storm, like you said, there's required to have one handicap parking spot. It's out there somewhere. We just need you guys to identify it.
Exactly.
All right. Go ahead.
That's actually one of our concerns out there, you know, as a team, is the existing condition of our parking, and the way that that's phrased for us does present some problems for us on paper, because the nature of our parking in that tandem configuration, when you look at it on the parcel, could you bring that map back up from your slides, please?
The site plan, that map?
Yeah, please, there's a, there's a graphic in there that I could actually point to that's going to illuminate this problem for everybody. And I'd rather talk to it directly, so that everybody on the board maybe can give me a condition in this approval that lets me can, like, continue my existing...
That's my concern, because I want to make sure that we don't go ahead and approve this, and then, and then you can't meet a condition of it.
I really appreciate bringing that up. That's a real big concern for us on the front end. Could you go back to the site?
Oh, the actual, oh, my bad.
Okay, so, a lot of our parking, as you can see, the lines extend past the actual line of our property boundary.
Unfortunately, you got to be on that mic.
So, when you look, there's a line where you see the extent of the parking lines that are perpendicular to that structure that come out towards the roadway of West Gulf Boulevard. You see they actually extend past the curvature of the property line proper, but they're within the line that would be the right-of-way line that's currently like where the roadway extends to. So, that's an existing condition that's been out there, that's how it's existed since the 90s. That's also why we don't see an ADA parking space on site in that parking diagram, because ADA wasn't codified until 1995. So, we were not, we predate the ADA compliance mechanisms that would have required that, that's on-site space. Now, when we were, we looked at that comment, we were looking about this already. We have a very good opportunity at the north edge of the site where we have parking already that's in connection to an ADA connected path of travel. It's paved space, that's where we're going to stripe an ADA spot if we need to, as part of our compliance. We're prepared to provide for that. We think it would be disadvantageous as a team, because we're going to lose one parking space to ADA spaces that we park every day to keep other parking out of the network of the city streets, and that's why we would really like the opportunity to preserve the parking that we're managing on site. That's why we have the valet attendant, is because it is this tandem stacked parking. We wouldn't be able to provide tandem parking without that affordance. That's why we do it. So, we have 30 spaces, because we operate 30 spaces. On-site parking, we have 18. So, if we lose the opportunity to park the tandem spaces and park over the line, which would be 100% in compliance with the regulation as written, so if I can't get some flexibility, I'm going to only have 18 spaces to park, and that's what we're going to end up only being able to park. And that's, that's just the truth. I would much prefer, as a city and as a citizen that grew up out here, and for all of the residents, to be able to park 12 more spaces on site, you know, and pay my guys to park it and manage it the way we have, you know, historically. That, that would be our best version of success, because otherwise, we're going to be disproportionately still in compliance. I'll provide you a 100% compliant site plan, but it's going to be 12 spaces less, but it'll still be in excess of the 17 I'm required.
I kind of want to make a point on that. Like, I just want to clarify that we're not forcing them to change anything with parking at all yet. We just want to have them submit the parking plan, we review it administratively, and if it triggers anything to go back to P, before P&amp;Z, we will bring it back. If not, we could approve this in-house.
Is it possible to approve this with only conditions one through three, and we drop the fourth condition?
Obviously, that's completely up to the board. That's why condition three was added in, where we were strictly only supposed to focus on just the tiki hut addition for this site plan modification and not factor in any of the other elements, like the parking situation, landscaping, anything like that.
Because in my opinion, you know, when you got the approval back in many years ago, I forget which one it is, let's see, back in 2003, and also 1990, you know, you're pretty much grandfathered with what you got. Believe me, I drive by it every day, Grant Smith drives by it every day. The only, the only thing that jumps out at me is what I brought up earlier, and if you put out that sign for me, I think that'll take care of business.
And plus, that's why we would love to have this plan in place, so these discussions will never have to continue again. We can be like, hey, you can look back to...
It sounds like we can just grant, I mean, leave that grandfathered in. We're only talking about the tiki hut here, and there's many other factors like landscaping you brought up that we're not considering, so why should we be picking on the parking at this point for brevity? That's my, I mean, that would be my take on it, and I'd so take, take out the fourth...
Sir, Mark has got a good point there. The, I mean, it would be, so you, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around the ADA situation right now. You predate ADA, and come on up to the podium again, if you would. You predate ADA. I know you got room for one handicap spot out there somewhere.
As a part of the conditions of approval, please ask for us to stripe an ADA space on site, if that's the necessary step. But like I said, it's a space we park every day. I'm happy to stripe it. If that's the, if that's the nature of bringing this site plan compliance forward and allowing for our grandfathered parking extent to remain, that we stripe the appropriate space, I would absolutely do so. I think that's a good middle road for us to meet you in accordance of our parking.
The one thing is, okay, let me ask you this. Currently, there's no ADA parking handicap spots out there. I've never seen a handicap person in this, I don't recall, but anyway, if one shows up, and I'm sure they do, how do you accommodate them now?
So, basically, the same way we accommodate every other patron that arrives on site, is we meet them at their vehicle at the podium, we, we identify the parking space that's either the most direct place for them to park, or if it is a patron that it needs ADA affordance. Like I said, we have a space on site that is 100% paved, it has the necessary access with and for it. We park them there, we go inside, we find a vehicle, if it's already parked there, we move it, and then we have them park there, they're afforded the ADA path of travel directly. There's also spaces that are across the street, you know, that, as you guys know, we park in that little lot sometimes, there's ADA spaces there. I just don't think they're the best version of how I would say that I'm compliant, because the path of travel is broken, but I have a space on site, I can make ADA, and that's how we afford that permission currently.
And what I was thinking was, well, maybe we just modify the condition number to afford us, say, provide one handicap parking spot.
Richard, can I, what was, what was the date of the ADA thing, 1990?
It was a while ago, I couldn't even tell you.
It wasn't passed in Congress until 92, it wasn't codified until 95 with Florida Building Code.
Okay, and just to point out again why staff would like this site plan, because I'm looking at a P&amp;Z case number, in 2003, a site plan was approved, which clearly depicts a handicap space. That's why I don't know what's going on. That's why staff would really love to see this parking situation resolved.
If you'll send that to me, we can resubmit that as the necessary graphic and agree that that can stick then.
Perfect.
I think what Richard said would be a good compromise, move this along.
Yeah, let's just move this along. That'll be fine. Could we get a motion to approve it with conditions as is for 1 through 3, and then just make number 4? Please provide a site plan that shows one handicap parking spot.
Except we need to strike the Florida Building Code on the first one as well.
And that too.
All right.
So Chris, since you're talking about it, go ahead and make a motion.
All right.
Any other discussion? Everybody good? All right. So for, I would move for case number SMOD 000527-2005 at ADA 01 West Gulf Boulevard, Treasure Island. The zoning board, make a motion to approve the site plan to allow the proposed 297 square foot tiki hut to be installed over an existing seating area for an existing alcoholic beverage establishment, with the conditions that are shown but edited to remove Florida Building Code from condition 1, and to delete or modify condition 4 to simply say that the property owner will provide a striped, handicapped ADA space on the property.
Sounds good. Can I have a second? All right, we've got a motion by Chris Downing, a second by Grant Smith. Could we have a roll call?
Alia Cree.
Yes.
Gary Patenziana.
Yes.
Mark Swodzinski.
Aye.
Chris Downing.
Yes.
Daniel Billingsley.
Aye.
Grant Smith.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, go build your tiki hut. Okay, let's see here. Public comments for non-agenda items. Anybody in the public who wants to speak?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Seeing none, reports and comments from city attorney staff and board members.
Yes.
We'll let Gavin go first. Anything you got?
I don't have anything specific. If you guys have any questions for me, always feel free to reach out. I do quite a few office hours. Been here four days this week, so. I think everyone has my cell. If not, feel free to get with me afterwards, and I'm happy to provide that for you.
In regard to staff, I know we've got Joan Goodrich in the audience. We'd love to hear from you and see if anything's developing in this hurricane-damaged ghost town we live in. At least my street is.
Well, not true. What an exciting board meeting, what you all have done in continuing the momentum. So I do have a slide deck, so I'm just going to move here and then move back.
Okay, great. I'm mostly speaking about my street, Joan. It's a ghost town.
Yes, I need a break.
Yeah, yeah. Every house on my street is.
There's none. I can do it for you. Well, again, I call this presentation momentum, because you can certainly feel it on the island. And again, thank you all for what you're doing to move folks forward that are rebuilding, that are recovering. And like I said, what a very exciting meeting. So, oh. Just wanted, I know most of you, again, advocated for this new role of economic development. So we put it in place in January of this year, the Office of Economic Development, and it's certainly my privilege to be its first, your first economic development director. But I did just want to spend a moment in why economic development matters. Again, from an economic development point of view, my role to simply facilitate conversations between those that want to make investment in our economy and everything else in our community. And when we have successful businesses and a successful economy that provides tax-based services, vibrancy to our community, then our community well-being rises too. So, the last couple of months, again, as we continue to get our legs underneath us, some of the new ventures, in addition to some of what you had already approved and supporting with Katiki, our 21-room hotel. The Marquee Cafe came online in the south side of town. Adam opened up Planet Ice Cream and Candy next to Publix. Curious Soul, Brittany opened up, and if you haven't been by, for her coffee and baked goods, custom cakes here on 107th. I invite you to please go and see her. A New Family took over Original Pizza. So Brooklyn and her family now are running that just a block up. And you might have noticed Bristol Cleaners moved from 107th into the old hardware building. It's now called Seaside Cleaners. So these are just some of the small businesses now that are moving into the spaces that are available to them, and rebuilding that vibrancy and moving our momentum forward. So why Treasure Island? You know, so as I continue to have conversations with those that you might put me in contact with, those that I meet as I'm networking, or those that get referred in all kinds of different ways, you know, the market growth potential here on the island is extraordinary. You told me that when I first came in, and it is true. Our strong visitor hospitality industry does provide a great foundation. However, there's the ups and downs of this industry. So as we look forward, we should think about how we can diversify our industry here on the island. The strategic location with direct access to the largest city in the region gives us great opportunity as we move forward. Responsive municipal services and ready infrastructure is here. But as I heard you question, making sure that we always have what we need as we continue to evolve the island moving forward, of course, is important from a concurrency point of view. Pro-business leadership mindset that we have on the dais, and the problem-solving mindset that we have here in City Hall and with our board leadership, like yourself. You know, these are the things that I talked to and talk about as I carry the Treasure Island message forward. You already know and have seen what's in the works, but this is, again, a part of a presentation that I do make as I bring the word of Treasure Island forward. So of course, we continue to watch for Caddy's next chapter here on the island move forward. So much amazing conversation around our Thunderbird Beach Resort and some of the potential changes to our LDRs to support our RFM 50 category. Of course, the Tahitian now is evolving into the seaside beach resort, new ownership, new ideas for the island. And again, just what you had spoken about and supported tonight are wonderful examples of what's in the works for the island, some of the completed and reopenings. Now, for some communities, again, you know, why is Waffle House reopening something to be excited about? Or the Bayside Inn and Marina coming back after having such a, you know, all of the repairs, beautiful repairs and renovations they've done in the Billmar? Well, that's the Treasure Island way. Every time we see somebody else reopen their doors, especially after what we've been through, is an appropriate opportunity to celebrate and to go, we're building momentum. So coming soon, we continue to work with the owners on 107th on the north side of the street, Mr. Shlomo Malau. He now owns 116 through 152 there, next to what in between Surf Style and Foxy's. So we are now supporting his leasing team, his new leasing team, as he looks at building a new business mix there, as he brings back that shopping center for us. Additionally, another local family has been working on the 111 property across the street from him, where Gigi's is. I'm sorry, the, my photography isn't so good. But on the corner where those three cars are to the left, so we're working with now another new business that's looking to go into that space. So again, where we'll have the opportunity to see new construction is once we fill our existing spaces, we'll have that interest grow as we look to bring new commercial spaces and properties onto the island. The momentum with intention, of course, I've heard you all talk since I've been here of our three strategic areas of opportunity, the downtown area, the Treasure Bay area, and of course, the Johns Pass area. Between community development and myself, we've been in a lot of conversations with all three of these areas and the property owners in these areas as we support their next steps moving forward. And of course, the important project that you'll be kicking off in conjunction with the City Commission as it relates to the LDRs Phase 2, an important part to unleashing our full potential with these key strategic areas of opportunity. Along with the conversation we just had this week with the City Commission around a new Treasure Island citywide master planning process, again, is key for us to really look at the big picture. Take this opportunity to recognize what we've all been through, what we've all been hoping for. When I got into the files as it related to all of the planning that we've done over the past 20, 25 years, again, a lot of fantastic work that we can build on, yet there's a lot of work that we'll need to do on that problem-solving side of things as we make sure that tomorrow's Treasure Island is better than today. So for those of you that have, I've spent some time with, you'll know that I'm a bit of a data nerd, so I always approach this work of economic development and looking at our indicators. And this is why I feel confident that, again, the theme for economic development moving forward is definitely momentum. But there are, you know, the data tells us, we've been on this slippery slope here on the island for quite some time. From a population point of view, we've lost 6% of our population, not quickly, but since 2010, we've lost 6% of our residents from the island. We have 3,700 households. Average age is 62.1 here on the island, and our household size is 1.69. From a downtown foot traffic point of view, we've got a new tool now that we're filling some of this gap for data information, and that tool is telling us that since 2022, we've been on a downward trend as far as downtown activity. And you can see that number. We've dropped business activity by almost 40%. But what's interesting is those that come to the downtown, that use the downtown, on average, are younger than what the island is median ages. So our average visitor or user of the downtown is 43, and then the household size for that, for downtown activity is 2.3. So this is maybe where, when we see on Saturdays and Sundays, the parking lots fill up, you know, the families come in, going to the beach, and then coming in to eat and shop and listen to some good live music. From a hotel performance point of view, boy, you know, no surprise, it's been a rough year. So these are our recent numbers from our partners that visit St. Pete Clearwater. So while occupancy is up by 4%, supply continues to remain down. No surprise, Thunderbird is down, Tahitian is down, some of these other hotels are still down. But demand is also down. So, you know, something for us to continue to look for, because the competitive environment, certainly for visitors, is extraordinary. So again, if we're going to continue to support the visitor and hospitality industry on the island, we're going to have to work at it. You know, nobody's coming here just because we're Treasure Island, not when they've got other choices to the north and south of us. So some of the work that we'll do with our property owners, again, to modernize, to renovate, and then as we, as a community, continue to build amenities in which they need to come to Treasure Island because they can only get, fill in the blank, you know, so that's some of the cool work that we have to do together. From a commercial real estate point of view, just wanted to let you know, current office space, we have none. It's all, whatever we had is filled, and it's going at about $22.50. Retail, we've got 12% vacancy right now for $31.51. But as we repurpose our commercial properties, as we build new mixed-use commercial properties, of course, all of that's going to go up. And, you know, once again, we're going to have to compete for the type of tenants that we'd like to have here on the island, or we'd like to take from other places and put them here on the island. I push office, and when I talk to locals here about the office, they go, don't need it. And I'd like to just get you thinking that, yes, we do, and we can support new office on the island, especially with some of the opportunities that we have for small headquarters, bringing back professional service firms, creative service firms, et cetera. So there is a place for us, the office market, that's currently, you know, not in a center-city downtown area. And again, that's because of our location to the top city around. From a non-residential tax base, we're about $624 million that we contribute to the community. That is down by 6.5%. We lost 17% value of all properties on the island since the storms. But, and our non-residential tax base contributes 16% to the overall. Treasure Island businesses and jobs were about, you know, just close to 400 businesses, and that's everything from a solo entrepreneur to those that you see in our storefronts in Main Street. About 2,400 jobs. So I just wanted to check and make sure that there wasn't anything else that I wanted to point out. Well, I do actually want to point out, so from a commercial construction point of view, you all know this, but again, I just want to repeat it for those that might be newer to the island. The last time we saw new commercial construction was the Fusion in 2019. Publix came onboard 2008. So between 2008 and this period of time, for the last 17 years, Treasure Island has welcomed just a little over 200,000 square feet of non-residential construction or commercial construction. So that's just about 12,000 square feet of new every year. We can do better, and we certainly have an opportunity as we move forward together to build that vibrancy. Thank you. I'll go faster, because I know I'm between you and maybe the Katiki Hut. So again, some of the hurdles that I need your help solving is, we need to, if we're going to build and diversify our economic base, we're going to need more places to put businesses and entrepreneurs, headquarters, small headquarters into it. We'll need more of those commercial spaces. One of the hurdles that I'm having, and I'm losing new businesses to town, is some of what you had talked about earlier was parking. You know, so parking as it relates to businesses going into our existing spaces in particular, we can't accommodate them right now based on our current parking rules. So, you know, as you look at the LDRs, I ask that you especially pay attention to that part of the code, too. Commercial rules, which again, you're working on, but our approach to how we take care of and how we support some of the folks that came in to you tonight. You know, I'm looking to add some additional value to that, so as they're touching community development, I want to get involved earlier so we can build those relationships, because they, these projects and businesses don't only just need city services, they could possibly need some other things as they continue to grow and prosper in our community. And an example of that would be one of the small businesses that I'm assisting that's looking for some financing to help with working capital. So again, my connections to our other economic partners to bring some of that to the table, so it doesn't, they don't have to just do everything on their own. So looking to build in a new program called Business Navigator Services, in which there is that enhanced level of service that we provide here in Treasure Island, and that'll become part of our competitive advantage as we move forward. Again, I already talked about the commercial activity. We're on the wrong slope. We want to go up instead of down, thinking about how we use city property. A lot of conversation around that in the months that I've been here, you know, what can go where and what should go there, and what can we do with public-private partnerships moving forward. So these are some of the things and new tools that we'll put in a new toolbox, I think, as we go through the citywide master planning process. Competitive mindset, even coming to this work with that, that, yeah, you know, we can compete with our neighbors to the north and south for what we want, you know, and getting really good at building the team approach in order to win more. And that flows into, then, one of the other hurdles that we'll need to solve together is having unified messaging. When you go to communities that are winning, generally, no matter who you talk to in that community, they're saying the same thing. So I think we've got some great opportunities. So I think we've got some great opportunities for us to unify messaging. So when you all are out there in the community, you know, we're, you know, one team, Treasure Island, saying the same thing, you know, we want you, we welcome you, and, you know, and this is because we know what we want. And then just the champions and partnerships. We shouldn't go it alone, we don't have to go it alone. It's one of the reasons why the first six months, I was here on the island, we spent time in looking at all of the grant opportunities and disaster recovery funds that the island has that can avail itself, you know, that's kind of the upside to going through a disaster, unfortunately, and putting those partnerships in place, whether it's with the county, when we go to compete for community development block grant disaster recovery funds early next year, whether that's fighting for funds from the state or fighting for funds from the, from Washington. These are, you know, we've got to, you know, kind of suit up, arm up, and get a little swag with our requests, because Treasure Island deserves it, and we can certainly win more if we've got stronger partners. So from an OED, Office of Economic Development mission, our mission is to spark and support a thriving and dynamic economy, bringing Treasure Island to life. My plan for the next 12 months, and really part, is the strategic framework for the next five years of work, simply to increase the non-residential tax base. So I'm counting, I've got my baselines, this is where, you know, my focus on plans is really annoying to some, I should say. Stimulating commercial rehab and new construction, again, office flex, retail and hospitality, increasing the downtown customer foot traffic, beginning to work on that with our partners, expanding the diverse mix of business companies and jobs, and yeah, we can recruit companies, and improving the city's reputation for business. So everything that I do, that I do in conjunction with you, my colleagues here at the city, partners beyond the city, is all focused on that. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report from economic development, and there you go.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, some of us on this board were here Tuesday night, and of course, the comprehensive land use plan modification for the resort facilities high district was approved on the first reading. On the fourth, it probably, if things go the way that they seem to be going, will be approved at the second reading. What can we do, because the one that is first and foremost is Thunderbird, what can we do to encourage them to come on in with a site plan for our review? I mean, I hear a lot of negativity out there, there are certain individuals, especially that are saying, oh, they're just doing this so they can sell it. And I've had a lot of conversations with people and said, no, they're actually working on plans, and we would like to see that plan. What have you heard about them proceeding?
Well, I don't think anybody goes through a lot of these processes without having interest in trying to get to the end. So as far as I know, you know, getting to the end and seeing the Thunderbird rise up here in Treasure Island is the end result that we look forward to. For me, I think the opportunity that they suggested, that we can use development agreements for some of this work moving forward versus maybe traditionally how the island has done, is intriguing. I've served two communities in which we had that tool in the toolbox, and it gave the community a lot of opportunity to benefit, not only from, again, if it wasn't enough for the community, that, you know, the building coming back, the new construction, the tax base, the jobs, the yada, 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 or the et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, excuse me. But if the community, well, like, one community wanted contribution because they needed some new fire equipment. There was bus stops along a particular road that the community wanted for more safety. There was bike lanes that were provided, you know, so this notion of community benefits, you know, as part of developer agreements, I think, is a good opportunity for the island. And kind of speaks to what I was saying, we don't have to do everything ourselves, so this notion of partnership, I think, is a positive one. So I look forward to, you know, supporting that work, and then, you know, so what we have to do now is have that conversation with the community and go, okay, what's the list, you know, of potential community benefits? So we know when someone comes.
I'd like to say, I think the Thunderbird will be the catalyst. What I see out here is the Thunderbird, the Arvilla, the Sands, the Tahitian, and the Gators property are the four that are ripe for something to happen. And I think, of course, the Thunderbird is the one that, once again, is first and foremost, I just want to see if we can do anything to encourage them to go forward. Like I said earlier, there's a lot of people saying, oh, they're just getting ready to sell it. And of course, we don't want to, I mean, I've met the owners, they, you know, it's not done until I see some dirt turning out there. And I just want to say that from this board standpoint, and disagree with me if you don't agree with me, we'd just like to see what we could.
I think, well, I agree with that, and I think, you know, one of the things the city could do is, from a teaming approach, is make sure that, you know, the Thunderbird gets all the help they need so that they don't get arbitrary roadblocks in front of them, you know, going forward with submitting, you know, their plans and to any degree that, you know, could reduce their own costs and getting the permitting part of this done that's within the purview of the city would make sense. I realize that we're kind of limited on that. And obviously, to the degree that they can do the right thing to help provide some good back to the public in terms of what that site, you know, and development plan would look like, would be what the rest of the population here wants. But we certainly don't want to do anything to stand in the way of them moving forward quickly.
Yeah, somehow, we just got to figure out how to encourage them to go ahead and pull the trigger and get some dirt turning. Because, you know, I mean, just to move on with a few other things, I mean, we're going to have a joint meeting on Monday with the City Commission at 6:00 to talk about the LDRs.
4 o'clock.
Is it 4?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I got the, I need to make sure I show up at the right time.
Trying to help you.
Yeah, appreciate that. Well, normally, the meetings are at 6, but anyway, at 4 to talk about Phase 2. And, you know, just looking around the city, oh, there's some, I don't think this city has actually had, and correct me if I'm wrong, a true rezoning in the last 30 years. I mean, I know we did something at Triangle Park, and that doesn't count in my mind.
Right.
I'm talking about a real rezoning. And the only way I can ever see anything happening at the Yacht Club, because that's one of the most, biggest disappointments in the whole city. I mean, we've got this beautiful facility sitting down there, empty, and they've used up all their capacity with their current zoning district. And we need to have them start thinking about a different type of zoning for that property.
I think that can all be a part of this, you know, broader discussion on the city master plan, to make, help make something like that happen in terms of the necessary zoning changes, in particular, those areas.
And I'll say, you know, everyone that has an interest on the island is paying attention to all of the conversations that are had, you know, at your meetings, at the commission meetings, et cetera. So, you know, everybody wants the same thing, which is a better Treasure Island. How we get there together is what we'll, you know, what we'll figure out.
Yeah, Joan, I appreciate, I appreciate you've got, you've got a tough job, you know, you've come in, you know, a tough time in the city to be the economic developer, and I appreciate the statistics and everything that you shared today, and particularly, you know, the need for a unified messaging coming out to help the city. I think all of us would probably agree that part of what's missing for the city is a vision as a part of this, and it's not really something I saw in your presentation today, and I encourage you to, as a part of, you know, the master planning process, and I appreciate the fact that you're supportive of getting that done, too, that we all together need to work on a vision that can actually, you know, catalyze, become the catalyst for the kind of development that everybody wants here. And it's missing right now. I think we're, we probably all, I couldn't tell you what the, you know, the, you know, what's the definable difference of why Treasure Island and not somewhere else? And, you know, we have great assets here, not sure we've quite gotten to the place where we capitalize on from that vision point of view, but I appreciate your efforts.
We're this close to doing it together, and that's what's so exciting, momentum.
Joan, a question for you, a couple of questions. You guys have put a lot of work in going out and chasing grants. Did we get any? Are we in the process? Are they done?
We're moving through, it was so funny, that was such a wonderful learning experience. We discovered 51 funding opportunities for the island for various reasons, just starting with the federal government through FEMA. I just have in my mind this S, or this snake that they call it, so, you know, we've been making our way through these projects. But, you know, FEMA is looking pretty good for some of the reimbursement in particular that we're fighting for, and our new grants manager and that function that we put in now is on lead point for that with some of the consultants that the state gave us that are still with us to get through that. What I learned is disaster funding is big business, and without, but for the city putting in that investment, we certainly wouldn't have gotten as far as we have. We put in $30 million worth of grants for hazard mitigation, and we got some, we continue to move through that process. Again, not as fast as we'd all like, but we continue to positively take steps through the process. And then, again, our next big opportunity is with Pinellas County. We just saw this week, the county opened up the portal for all of the residential people first programs out of the 813 million. There's another 400 million for communities like us, and that opens up in the spring. So we've got our grants team, our electeds, all of our friends, starting to position us for that, too. So, Gary, gosh, the minute we win, competitive mindset, any grant, we'll be celebrating with all of you, because again, it literally took the whole island to get us this far.
I know there's a lot of activity back there, and it's nice to see that, not being so, it's not transparent enough for us to see it, so it's nice to see some activity back there. But I think it might help your cause a little bit, too. Somehow you can, we don't expect to see every detail of, but we're out there chasing this, we're chasing that, chasing that. I think it would be very helpful, not only to this group, but also the residents.
Yeah, so I believe the city manager has us earmarked for the second meeting in November, led by our chief financial officer, Victor Ortiz, where we've got the grant function embedded in our finance group. So I believe that's going to be right before the holiday, before the Thanksgiving holiday that we'll be bringing forward the update report to the community.
Very beneficial.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a specific question, a general one, Joan. The 6% population decline that you reported, does that account for the people that are off the island as a result of the storm?
No. So this is going to definitely come from whatever our public sources is right now. Right now, this is Esri, so no, so I don't think this is showing the impact of the storms yet.
Pre-storm.
Yeah, so I think these figures, you know, take me through 2024, if I remember, or first quarter 2025, and it's not going to show us whatever behavior is doing. Now, the tool that I'm using for downtown foot traffic, I'm still playing with this tool with the rest of the team, it can show me activity in, not only for the whole island or downtown, or this or that. So there's some work that I'm going to do to see if I can get a sense for foot traffic here on the island that'll give us a little better numbers as to what's happening.
Thanks. And then the general question is, in your experience, you mentioned working with developers in the past and producing public benefit as a result of that. Could you just briefly explain how that process worked in your experience? Did you solicit public input? Did the developers put forth in their site plan proposed amenities that the public would benefit from? How did that work?
Yes, we did. You know, at the time that we put community benefits on the table, we were actually going through our comp plan update. So we did use that very public engagement process, so what we can do with the master plan is the same thing. So when we huddle together, not only will we look at, you know, what do you want here, or what amenity, or how big, the character, et cetera, we can have that conversation in community benefits. So I think we had actually a list of 25 things, and we asked the investors, developers, property owners, you know, to first take a look at that list. Some of them even came up with some ideas we didn't even think about, but at least there was some sort of thing. So then, as they went through whatever formal processes in order to bring the project to reality, that all was brought forward during those processes. Does that make sense? So we did have a list going in when we had those conversations, you know, like when our community development team has those conversations initially.
And that list was derived from public input?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yep, thanks.
Actually, I have a question, Jim.
Good, thank you, Joan.
I have a question.
Go for it, Jesse, I don't usually get one out of you.
Jesse's getting me back, because I ask him like 14 questions a day, so, okay, Jesse.
So I just saw at last night, City of Madeira Beach, they just did an update of their master plan. So basically, what they have now, would that be a good idea of what the City of Treasure Island could expect out of the master plan?
Well, I haven't looked at Madeira Beach, so if it's citywide, absolutely. I know I've polled four communities. Punta Gorda is one that I had some time looking at, so that's good. As we prepare, as the staff team prepares for our conversation with the commission, they directed the manager to move fast, so by November 4th, you know, we're talking to a bunch of resources and stuff like that to try and bring this in for a landing. Yeah, you know, the citywide master plan, interestingly, it hasn't been used, I think, as much in Florida as it has in some other communities, but we're going to try and bring forward citywide master plans done here in Florida, you know, to give us a sense of what, you know, what it looks like, because we want it to be, or if I were making recommendations, as holistic as possible.
Okay, I'll look at them more. But yeah, Madeira Beach, they did do an update on their master plan last night, so, I don't know, haven't looked at it completely, but it is in their agenda packet.
Anybody else got any comments for Joan?
Thank you all, and I just want to make a call to action. If you have any recommendations, any referrals, any business you want me to meet, I know you all are connected, please, you know, help the new girls still make these connections in the community, because the more we know, the stronger relationships that we can make with our economic leaders. It'd make my job so much easier, thank you.
Okay, the meeting is, since I've been corrected, 4 o'clock on Monday, hope to see everybody there. The one thing that I wanted to bring up, I brought it up Tuesday night, but I want to see what this board thinks. We only have 11 different zoning categories in this city. Four of them are actually stuff like preservation, recreation, open space, institutional transportation slash utilities. Those aren't really going to change. The only one that might change is good old Treasure Bay, because we hadn't quite figured out what we want to do there. But the rest of them are sort of restrictive. What I touched on earlier was the Yacht Club. It's currently residential medium, 15 units per acre. And I think in order to get that piece of property moving in some direction, we're going to have to come up with some new zoning districts. And one of them that I was, got a lot of use of in the past was a planned development zoning district, which I would love to see in Treasure Island. We kind of have two right now, which is our downtown area. The trouble is, it has a very reg- is, it has a very restrictive downtown redevelopment plan, which unfortunately was put in place, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, that thing we found the other day. I think it finally got done in 2009. Hadn't been touched since, because it doesn't quite make all the various developers very happy. A PD ordinance basically puts it in the hands of the developer and says, show us what you want, just don't come up with anything wacko. I mean, you come in here with a 20-story building, or overhang is over 107th, you know, obviously, that's not going to fly. But it does put the onus, instead of trying to make the city tell them what we want, they say, hey, how about we do this? And it becomes a negotiation process. So think about that over the weekend, and maybe we can help guide the city commission in the right direction, because I'd love to see a planned development-type zoning for our downtown area, for the Yacht Club, for the Gators property. I think the west side of Gulf Boulevard, I think that's going to handle itself, because these, some of these older hotels, they have either started to come down or are in the process. But where the creativity is going to be needed is, obviously, the Yacht Club. That's a real disappointment to me. Another one that's really disappointing is Gators. I mean, right across the water, we got one of the most vibrant shopping areas for tourists in the county. And on our side, we got a, it's, even before the storm, it wasn't much there. So give it some thought, and we'll hope to see you guys on the 27th. Anybody got anything else?
Nope, sounds, sounds good.
Well, our next actual meeting, and how are we looking for the 20th of November, Jesse? We going to have any cases?
Yeah. Didn't have a list.
That'll be the week before Thanksgiving, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving on the 27th.
What ever happened on the Gators property with the city-owned park? Was any changes made on that? We're still sitting not to repair at this point, you know, where the rent, it's...
On which property is that?
It's the park.
Kingfish?
Kingfish.
Well, it is a street right of way. The city now owns it.
Right. No changes have happened with that. That's just as is.
That's just as is.
Yeah, we're what, you know, so having that, doing, you know, work with a planned development district for that and the other districts makes a lot of sense, because you can do a lot of, a lot of good.
For instance, I mean, that's where the, and if anybody wants to see a copy of it, that's where the old bridge used to go across, and that bridge abutment is falling apart. I think one of the previous public works directors was saying a half a million dollars to repair it. And I think Oscar Cizan was very accurate on that one. Sell it to Greenleaf Capital and let them fix it, because that little park, I just don't want to see the City of Treasure Island spend a half a million bucks on a bridge abutment. It's kind of a seawall.
Right. I just want to protect, I just want to protect the, that, the public access right there to, whatever development ends up, and that would be part of that planned development district. So we, really, it can all be, happen at the same time.
Well, the one that's been interesting, and I'll let, get to you in a second, because my next-door neighbor used to own what is now Corey Landings over in St. Pete Beach. And I thought their public amenities were pretty good, but they sent it back to the developers, had tried again. So, I mean, it included a public park. And, I mean, Greenleaf Capital, I've kind of known them, a little bit about them from my past occupation, and they do some pretty good-sized projects. It'd be nice to see them pull the trigger on something out here, too. But anyway, go ahead, Jesse, what's, what's your guy?
So just some upcoming things. I can't guarantee which one of these are going to fall in next meeting. So we have a special exception in site plan for just a single family, and that's strictly because it's in a CG zoning district, non-conforming lot. The only thing left is a single family for that one. A variance for a commercial dock, a site plan and a plat for a 10-town homes, another site plan for a coffee shop and an outdoor dining area, variance, typical stairs in the front yard, and then also another possible variance for square footage, non-conforming. Not sure we got to meet with them again. And then also a site plan approval for the, a six-unit building.
What was the last one?
The last one, it's like a six-unit building, it's being redeveloped.
Oh, okay.
But they're also requesting, it's, don't quite understand, we're going to have to meet with them again. They're also requesting like a variance to like the non-conforming square footage, like they want to build back six units, but then they want to go beyond the permitted square footage underneath the non-conforming section of code. I discussed it earlier today with Mary Ellen and Jackie. We're just going to have to meet with them again to make sure that we understand what they're trying to do. Because if you try to come in for, and try to get six non-conforming density units, but you increase your square footage, like they mentioned, you pretty much, you can't do that then, because you're increasing your square footage, you'd have to meet the density that the lot's at now.
Right.
So, yeah, we're just going to have to meet with them again and see what's going on with that one. But, yep, some good things coming up.
Well, we'll have a few cases to look at on the 20th, and that'll be your Thanksgiving gift. Great. Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
All right, very good. Yeah, Jesse, the one that you get to hear about again is the Pearl.
You can just tell that was just...